So Al, you got a little bit of rain?
Yeah, we did get some rain yesterday. Today was clear in the 50s. Uh, there's more rain forecast for later in the week. High winds along the beach and tornadoes.
Oh, that's fun.
No snow, no winds.
This weekend, it's the high is supposed to be like minus 12.
It's the high of the day.
The high.
The high of the day.
Well, the kids are skating. That's the good news is the kids will be skating, so.
Yes, the kids will be skating even though they probably are gonna get frostbite on their face.
The, the rink is open. That's the good news.
I heard that.
They were skating today. People were skating today.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order for the planning board and zoning commissioner for commission meeting for uh January 10th, uh, 2024. Um, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Al Blumer.
Here.
Jeff Di Benedetto.
Here.
Teresa Wiesler.
Here.
Susan Voisey.
Here.
Marie Olson.
Here.
Paulie Richter.
Here.
Sandy Conley.
Here.
Hey, um, we didn't have any minutes, did we? Cody, I didn't see any in what was sent out anyway.
I didn't find any in any of the files, so.
Okay. I wonder if there's, could be something from our last meeting, I would think. Um, be something to check up on anyway. Um, communications from the board, um, urban renewal agency updates, I guess that's me. Um, the last meeting that we had, we had a presentation from the proponents and they are have submitted an, or are thinking about submitting an application for urban, uh, or TIF funds to help with some of the exterior, um, improvements to the property. Um, but other than that, there's really no other information from the, um, urban renewal agency since the last meeting that we had. Um, city council rep, do you have anything?
Well, last night, um, we did have a presentation from workforce housing, Red Lodge area community foundation. And I found it kind of interesting that they think that the urban renewal agency's money could actually be used to purchase land with the caveat that it would have to be workforce housing. And, um, so that was kind of new to me. Um, and I did say that one of the things that I'd like to research is there seems to be a disconnect between the planning board and the building department. And in particular Alpine Basin, the conditional use permit was approved with fixing that flow rate. Yet they're, they've gone ahead and they're building 60 homes. But we only approved them with this condition that hasn't been met. And so I'd like to find out how that happened. Is it because the planning department doesn't get our approval? Or do they override it because, so that was a, a bit of a concern that I brought up.
Okay. I forgot. Welcome you back to the planning board.
Like you never left.
I know, it's, it's just changed seats.
My, my own mission. My intent was to do that right after roll call.
Hey Jeff, what's the follow-up on that?
What's that?
What's the follow-up now between the communication between the planning uh, board and the, and the building department now to resolve the question that she just asked?
I think, well, that that kind of brings up, you know, an issue that's been kind of something that we've been talking about needing to address or some other issues as well. And I guess one of the things maybe that would be worth having a discussion with the mayor at some point. And when we get a new planning director staff that have, you know, how do we better have communication and, and ensure that the conditional uses that are being um, that we're discussing and making part of approval process are in fact being followed up on and implemented. Cody, do you have any thoughts about that?
I don't. I'm not aware of what the process is now. Um, I mean, yeah, typically there is some sort of follow-up on the conditions before anything's allowed to move forward. So proving that, you know, just like in subdivision, you'd have to prove for final plat that you've met all the conditions. But I'm not sure what the process has been in Red Lodge for that.
Well, it's an unfortunate issue. And again, if, if we ever do have this joint session between the planning board and the council, that could be one of the topics that we, uh, address in terms of follow-up. I mean, we set conditions, requirements, uh, uh, regulations, and then what's the follow-up? If there is any. And again, the new planning director, Mayor Westwood and the council, those are questions that we should ask down the road.
I guess the other question is rather than just leaving that hanging in terms of this specific issue that Sandy addressed is is what is the next, what is the action moving forward, um, relative to Aspen Basin? You know, do they continue to
Build?
To build, uh, without the sort of meeting the condition of being able to certify that in fact they have the ability to provide water, um, to those units as well as for emergency firefighting.
I'm wondering, Jeff, if the first step is to ask Mayor Westwood if he would follow up with public works to see if there was a plan that maybe there's an agreement already to, you know, increase or fix the flow rate issue or, or where it stands. And, and that's not something we should be doing. It's something we could ask the mayor to check into.
I felt that we just needed to identify that there is a problem here. And see what the process is when the building department approves the building to begin. Because I would have guessed that no building starts until all the conditions are met. And that's the only, that's the only thing that you have to get them to do it. They say, okay, well, you can't build until you've increased the flow rate.
It's a process.
Yeah, there's a process breakdown here. And again, that's, that's probably Dave's, Mayor Dave's. Yeah, yeah. Mayor Dave's, uh, he has nothing else to do right now.
Well, Jeff, maybe it's some point in the future, near future, I can have a, a chat with the mayor and we can come up with a process on how we should do this moving forward, certainly in this interim.
I also think there's merit to follow up with what we've been discussing the last year or so in terms of having a a training session between the planning board and city staff and as well as, uh, in terms of, of essentially just to discuss the, the process and, and make sure that there's one, one in place. And if there is one in place, that it's being followed and
Because the, the conditions are not recommendations. They are hard and fast conditions. Is that correct?
Yeah.
They are conditions. They're not recommendations. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a tentative plan and Sandy, I thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
Um, Marie, do you have anything from the county?
Uh, yep, I went to the commissioner's meeting yesterday. It was regarding the county, uh, planning board. Um, they were to, uh, from what I understand, and Bullock can chime in if he'd like, since he's here. Um, if I misunderstood this wrong, but to pass a resolution of intent to update the Carbon County, uh, development regulations for the county planning board. Um, the four main points that I gathered was, um, uh, moving from interim jur-, uh, you know, um, rules and regulations regarding marijuana to permanent. The second one was a group two development permit for a commissial, uh, for commercial permits. Um, regarding like within 100 feet of a property, it, uh, as far as if you wanted to do something, who would have to be notified. Um, and then meetings with public comment, uh, number three, lighting, and number four, uh, commercial campground issues. And I didn't stay till the end, end, but the, I think I was there within five minutes to the end. But what they came through is I believe they passed the resolution of intent, correct? Um, omitting the lighting, adding 500 feet to the notice for group two. And a setback for, uh, solar farm, uh, 100 feet with additional screening. Um, so the public, so it wasn't right up against the road. So those were the main points there.
Bill, did you wanna add anything?
Bill Bullock, 910 Avenue, uh, also county commissioner. Um, I think Maria encapsulated it again going back. So the resolution of intent with the recommended changes, there's still a 30-day comment period on all that. There's opportunities still there to weigh in. Um, but yeah, and again, going back to the, the main thrust of it was primarily the, uh, addressing the interim zoning for marijuana businesses. You had two years to have the interim in effect. Um, two years has gone by. And so, uh, getting some of those hard and fast things taken care of insofar specifically distances. When we ran into this county specifically, Ellen Roberts with that little nuance about street addresses and not whatnot. But, uh, yeah, I think, I think Maria encapsulated in her comments. Happy to entertain any other questions if you like.
Does anybody have any questions for Bill at all?
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Um, the last item was allowed use table subcommittee updates and the last time we met was early December. Um, we're still working through the definitions for, um, for various, uh, items within the zoning regulations that as well as, uh, items to include in the allowed use table. Um, I think we're gonna probably kind of wait till we get a little bit more direction and from the mayor as well and city council in terms of what, what our priorities should be for the next foreseeable future. Um, but, uh, we're basically at a stage of just basically reviewing the definitions for the terms, some of the terms that are in the Red Lab zoning regulations. Um, and, and, uh, looking to maybe one of the things that we identified the, this, at our last meeting was there are some definitions that are included in the body of the document, but not in the definition section. So one of the things that I think that we wanna take a look at and, and discuss is make sure that all the definitions are basically in the definition section. And it's okay if there's repetition. But at least if somebody's looking for a term, they know they don't have to page through to find it within the body. It's all within, within the, the section on, on definitions. So that's, that's kind of where, where we're at. Um, Al, do you have anything you wanna add about that?
Uh, no, I just have a comment once we're, before we go to the next business.
Okay, Teresa, do you, do you have anything about?
Nothing to add, no.
And Sandy?
No, nothing.
Okay. Well, the next item on the, is, uh, under new business is, uh,
Before you go there, under the communications from the board, I wanna take the opportunity to officially welcome Sandy back to the planning board and, uh, look forward to the next couple of years of, of working with her.
Thank you, Al.
Okay.
All right, the next, next item is, uh, new business is a proposal for conditional use permit application for the development of a pre-existing coffee kiosk at 1125 Broadway Avenue North in the community entrance, entrance, uh, zone. Um, and Cody sent out the staff report earlier. So, um, before, I guess the next step is to, um, qualify the board and then we'll have the staff report and then, uh, additional information from the proponents in terms of what their, their project is and the extent that any information they'd like to provide us as a board and, uh, so I'll go ahead and, uh, qualify the board. Um, does any member of the planning board have any ex parte communication to disclose?
No.
No.
Does any member feel that they should recuse themselves from participation in the hearing and decision on the matter before the planning board?
No.
No.
Um, the authorities, the city planning board, uh, both needed action, uh, standard when, and with standard review of the Red Lodge zoning regulations. Um, to Cody, has the matter been properly noticed as required by the Red Lodge zoning regulations?
Yes, it has.
Right. Um, let the record indicate that the Red Lodge City Planning Board has been called and qualified to hear the matter at hand and the matter is quasi judicial in nature and has been properly noticed. Go ahead and have a report from you, Cody, and, as on the staff report.
All right. This is a conditional use permit application, number RLCU 2302. Applicant, owner applicant of the property is Fred Brewer and the authorized representative is Kristen Marshall. A little short summary of the proposed project. The applicant is proposing to reestablish a drive-through coffee kiosk at 1125 Broadway Avenue North. The proposal qualifies for a conditional use permit as a drive-through facility in the C3N district. Design review is not required per section 4.3.124I of the City of Red Lodge zoning regulations. As the kiosk will be developed in an existing structure with no proposed increase to the gross floor area. The project location and structure were previously utilized as a drive-through coffee business. Proposed improvements include structure facade, landscaping, and traffic pattern flow and paving. Um, it was, it should be noted, this proposal has gone, as Jeff mentioned earlier, before the Urban Renewal District Agency or Urban Renewal Agency. Um, but those criteria are not something to evaluate as part of this conditional use. The conditional use is actually a piece of achieving that goal in the end. So the next step after this on the Urban Renewal District would be to go to council. Um, Mr. Chair, would you like me to read the suggested conditions of approval word for word? Or would the board like to acknowledge that you've read them already?
What's the sense of the board?
I, I, we've read, I've read them.
Yeah, we've, we've read them, Cody. I don't think you need to go through the word for word. Uh, we may have some suggestions or changes after your report.
Of course. So let the record reflect, the board has acknowledged that they've read, received and read the suggesting conditions of approval. Another question, would you like me to read through any other portion of the staff report, including any of the review criteria?
Yes, uh, like you to kind of summarize or read through the review from growth policy and the, and the, I guess the other findings of fact that you have have identified.
Yes. All right, so staff analysis for conditional use permit application 23, 2023 dash 02. Um, as required by the city zoning regulations for conditional use permits, the standards for specific uses shall apply. So criteria A, evaluating whether the proposal is consistent with the Red Lodge growth policy. Findings of fact are the subject property is not located within a recognized historic district. The site is not identified in the active transportation plan for future, future trail connectivity. And this proposal serves to revitalize an existing structure and type of business. Conclusion, the subject property is located within a longstanding commercial area where commercial development has been contemplated. And the proposal is consistent with the goals of the growth policy. Criteria two, compatibility. Findings, the area has a mixed use of commercial and residential properties. No structural changes to the existing structure are proposed, although facade changes are proposed. Special planning to accommodate a drive-through facility business in accordance with MDT requirements has been included in the application. Conclusion, the proposed color and materials of the structure as included in the application are consistent with commercial and residential properties in the vicinity. The proposal is to reestablish the operation of a drive-through coffee kiosk facility business in an existing structure location. And the scale and bulk of the proposal is compatible with surrounding commercial development. Criteria C, findings of fact, the property is zoned C3N by the city Red Lodge to provide a mix of uses and promote aesthetically compatible multimodal approaches to the city. Zoning District C3N is intended to encourage high-density residential, commercial, and light industrial in an urban context that is consistent with Red Lodge's historic image. Zoning District C3N is intended to avoid typical strip commercial development, ensure controlled highway access, and promote multimodal transportation. Landscaping in the front of, in the front of the structures proposed to break up the visual impact of the structure and business. The proposal is to reestablish the operation of a drive-through coffee kiosk facility business in an existing structure location and increased traffic from the proposal or proposed use is likely. Conclusion, the proposal complies with the zoning requirements of the property. The proposal promotes infill investment and revitalization of commercially zoned property. An increased traffic should be a board consideration specific to whether or not increased traffic flows will impact adjacent commercial and residential uses. Criteria D, minimized adverse environmental effect, impact. Findings, the subject property and proposed conditional use are not located in the area of the city of Red Lodge with identified wetlands, riparian areas, principal wildlife corridors, steep slopes, or within a special flood hazard area. And the subject property is currently developed with a structure for commercial purposes. Inclusion, the subject property and proposed conditional uses are compliant with the this environmental impact criteria and no adverse impacts are anticipated. Criteria E, impact of public facilities and services. Findings, the property is located along routes that are routinely patrolled by police and fire department. As such, the development of the property should not have an impact on these services. The necessarily, necessary public services discussed in this review criteria either exist or are available on or to the property or can be readily expanded to serve the proposed use. And the proposal is to reestablish the operation of a drive-through coffee kiosk facility business in an existing structure location. Conclusion, the proposal is not anticipated to have negative impacts on public facilities or services. Criteria F, nuisance and hazard. Noise or hazard complaints are on file for business, businesses that are currently or have previously been located on the subject property. The proposal should not generate dust, fumes, smoke, or noxious odors detectable to the normal senses beyond the property line. And the hours of operation should be those of a typical commercial business and should not result in adverse impacts to the residential uses located in the adjacent area. Conclusion, the proposal should not generate additional noise or nuisance hazards. Increased traffic should be a board consideration specific to whether or not increased hazards associated with traffic are relevant. Criteria G, other codes. The proposed findings, the proposed conditional use is subject to regulation under various city and state permits. These include but are not limited to building permits, fire inspection, and fire permitting. If approved, the applicant would be required to obtain the necessary permits, inspections, and licenses from the various county, state, and federal agencies regulating any activities. Conclusion, when all required permits are obtained, the project will comply with this aspect of city, state, and federal code. Additional standards for review in the C3N zoning district. Regarding parking lots, the project location and structure are not changing use or being expanded. Therefore, parking standards are not applicable per section 4.5.12. However, it's unclear what previous parking standards were enforced on this property. Because of the nature of the conditional use, a drive-through coffee kiosk, customer parking should not be necessary. But staff parking and a loading, unloading area should be designated and located on the side or rear of the principal structure. And parking is prohibited between the structure and the highway. Controlled access, access to US Highway 212 shall be consistent with resolution 3228 Controlled Access Plan and comply with Red Lodge zoning regulations section 4.5.45. The application includes communications between the applicant and MDT detailing that as long as there are no physical changes to the right-of-way and the site layout provides adequate queue storage to prevent vehicles from backing up onto the highway, no permitting is required. As demonstrated in the application, the traffic flow plan has been revised to address these concerns. Sidewalks, Red Lodge zoning regulations section 4.5.86 has been suspended, so there's, section is not applicable. Rutt Creek views, not applicable to this subject property. Screening, service areas such as dumpsters and parking lots larger than four parking spaces shall be screened from adjoining right-of-way and uses. Screening shall include an opaque wall and/or fence at least six feet in height, along with vegetation. Street wall length and shape. This is not applicable as no structural changes to the existing structure are proposed in the application. Roof standards, roofs shall be of a color and design that are compatible with the rest of the building. Roofs shall have varying pitches, parapets, angles, and other acceptable styles that are, that prevent the monotony of roofs. All roof penetrations shall be gauged and screened to the maximum extent practicable. Historic character, the application proposal is to utilize an existing structure and not expand the gross floor area. Therefore, the standard is not applicable and has been waived. The application does include exterior paint colors they plan to use, which appear to be consistent with Red Lodge historic design standard colors. Design review required is, design review is required for any designs and plans for new buildings and expansions to existing buildings that increase the gross floor area 20% or more. This application does not include any new construction or expansions. And a design review therefore is not required. Non-residential uses, commercial uses proposed to construct or expand an area by 2,000 square feet or more are required to comply with Red Lodge zoning regulations section 4.4.10 and section 4.5. This application does not include any new construction or expansions and therefore the standard has been waived. Additional applicable standards, outdoor advertising. Assigned permit shall be obtained from the city of Red Lodge prior to the installation or modification of any outdoor advertising associated with a proposed conditional use. All outdoor advertising shall comply with the standards set forth in Red Lodge zoning regulations section 4.6.0. The maximum allowable signage on commercial properties is 120 square feet with no individual sign exceeding 40 square feet. Sign luminance for operation between sunset and sunrise shall not exceed 700 candlelight per square meter. And illumination should be dimmed or extinguished completely at business closing. Flashing, blinking, or moving signs are prohibited. And again, parking standards, we've already discussed this, but it's a, no, additional standard. But it's, additional standard, project location, structure, not changing use or being expanded, therefore parking standards are not applicable. We've already discussed some conversation around staff parking. And lighting, per Red Lodge zoning regulations four point five point seven three D, street lighting along state highways is exempt from lighting standards as they follow the jurisdiction of MDT lighting standards. Any pre-existing lighting, if installed after June tenth, two thousand twenty-two, is also exempt from lighting standards. All additions, modifications, or replacements of more than twenty percent of existing outdoor lighting fixtures shall meet the requirement of Red Lodge zoning regulations section four point five point seven zero.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I'm gonna go ahead, is there any report from the applicant that they would like to address to the board?
It's not so much a report, but um, I wasn't sure what we should include. My name's Kate Marshall, I'm her daughter. We would be co-owners in this. Um, the only thing, I thought Cody's report was phenomenal. The only thing I want to stress is that we would change the flow. The original drive-through came through the front, and we would want it to go kind of looping around, so we've talked to Fred about moving those plows and kind of the eyesores off to the back part of the, where it has a storage facility area. And then that way, anybody with horse trailers, work trucks, anything like that would have a better flow, and it wouldn't hurt the congestion of, of two twelve.
I bring it, bring it back to the board. And I think I'll just, I'll, I'll start, I'll start with Al. Um, do you have any questions of Cody or of the applicant?
Yeah, I do. Do we want to hear from the public first, Jeff, or do you want to go to us?
Uh, well, according to my.
Yeah, I changed, I changed it. Well, you can do it however you want.
Yeah, let's, well, there's no public here, but I guess, is there anybody online? I guess I'll, just to be official.
There is a raised hand.
Yes, sir. Okay, I'll open it up to a public hearing. Does any?
He's muted.
You know, typically, we'll heard from the public before we, because that might have brought up additional questions, and then if there's no public comment, then I can ask a couple of questions.
No comments from online, and no comments from in here, I'll close the public hearing. Alright, yeah, we'll bring it back to the board, um, to uh, address questions of either the staff or of the applicant. Go ahead, Dal.
Okay, um, Cody addressed my urban renewal, uh, question sufficiently. Alright, my only other, I thought the report was very detailed and complete, Cody, thank you for that. Um, my question was on the wording on parking. In the parking in there, you say the employee, uh, shall, uh, find a, a designated. I would prefer to see will. I'd, I'd like to see that they would designate an area for staff parking. Um, that would be part, I think, of your condition six. I would change that from, um, I recommend we change that from shall to will, that we'll designate a specific area for staff parking. That would be my recommendation. Other than that, I had no additional questions.
Okay. Reese?
Um, I'm, I'm thinking I've got a partial answer, uh, but the, um, the report did not mention, and this is again, the first time I think we've had anything come here since the U R D like a, a proposal. I wasn't sure if there was one or not. It wasn't mentioned within the report that this is, of course, in the U R D, and the applicant could apply to the U R D agency for some funds to, to help clean up that lot. And, um, I wasn't sure if we needed, if we expect to see that in the reports moving forward somehow, but, so that's just a process question.
Yeah, I can, oh, do you want me to?
Yeah, go, okay, Cody, yeah.
Yeah, so when, right now, as your zoning regs stand on conditional use permits, there's no language in there tying the urban renewal district piece in, so I, I think we can talk about it because that is a simultaneous happening, but it's, it can't be pertinent to this review because it's just this, this part right here, what you're looking at is just the conditional use.
Right, because there's a whole, you know, the whole ball of questions that would go with that would be, you know, um, would there be special criteria for the conditional use because it's in the U R D? And what we're saying is no, but they can apply, correct?
Yeah.
Uh, we refer to the growth policy, but we don't refer to the U R D plan. And one echoes the other, so I don't see that that's an obstacle. It's just I wondered if it should be in here.
Um, yeah, my recommendation is that something moving forward, that now that you've got these applications coming through more consistently with the urban renewal agency, that maybe you do revise your zoning regulations to tie that piece in. Because until you do, it's not super legally defensible to use that as a component, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
One of the things that we applied for with the urban renewal is funding for, to put the asphalt down, but we can't do that until the end of May. So we would need your guys' permission to still operate with the conditional permit, knowing that we couldn't get the asphalt down until the end of May.
Yeah, and the purpose for that urban renewal, the main purpose was to cover the cost of that whole driveway asphalt. Because that's about nineteen thousand alone, you know, so that was the driver for us on going to, well, and Courtney mentioned it and suggested what we, we perceived with that application, so we did, and, and we were approved based on money being there. So, yeah, so the process question aside, um, the only other concern I had was partially, hopefully answered. Um, because when you look at the photo, you see where the existing drive was, and if you're gonna come around the side instead, um, that's I think it's a great idea, because I was most concerned about the huge Boyd sign, and then people not seeing the tiny structure until, and then slamming on the brakes and trying to.
Yeah.
You know, so, so that's good.
That huge Boyd sign.
That huge Boyd sign, it hides the whole.
Pesky businesses.
It hides the whole building, you can't see it. It's a tiny building.
Yeah.
It's a tiny building.
Alright, um, so I, I saw everything, looks like it's, um, it, you know, controlled access has been addressed. It was just that one visibility question I had, um, coming off the highway, and, um, what's the plan for, um, you know, the, 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 there's a lot of stuff there. So I had questions about room for parking, room for the drive-through, if all that stuff isn't moved somewhere, so I take it that's part of the plan.
Yeah, we're working with Fred on that.
Okay.
Good.
Um, I think that was it. Of course, there is no sidewalk requirement, but, um, according to our growth policy and the U R D both, um, you know, increasing our pedestrian, um, traffic and, and bicycling would be something that maybe could be applied for as well through the U R D, I don't know, but I, I would think that's something worth looking into.
Sandy?
Yeah, I was curious what the square footage of the kiosk was. Nowhere in here does it address that.
Address what?
The square footage.
Yeah, it's thirteen by six.
By thirteen.
Yeah. I could get my phone out, but that, that's the dimensions of the building, thirteen feet.
Hundred and thirty-six.
Hundred and thirty-six.
Wow. Um, is there, this is a two point four seven acre parcel. If we give them a conditional use for a drive-through on that parcel, does it apply to all the buildings on that parcel? Does this open up a can of worms because it's not just one parcel? It's one building on a larger parcel, so I would, I don't know how that works. Maybe Cody would know that we can, I mean, we're trying to allow a, a drive-through on one building on a, in a huge parcel that has other buildings. So that's, I just am concerned that this conditional use permit will apply to the property and not to this building on the property.
Yeah, that's a valid concern. I think that as it's proposed in the application, it's not, it doesn't include any of the other buildings, so there's that piece that's clear, but if you wanted to be extra sure, you could add a condition stating that this conditional use simply applies to that kiosk structure and surrounding however many feet within their site plan, so.
Okay, and, um, I, I'm guessing, or, or is there already water and power to the kiosk?
Yeah.
And the sanitation, there's probably not a toilet in there?
No.
So you would have to use, uh, the facilities in one of the other buildings?
Yes, the building is being used as the, um, some of the cleaning, some of the cleaning.
Okay.
We would ju, we, we have permission to go over there, use the bathroom in there if needed.
Another, uh, concern I had was the screening shall include an opaque wall and/or fence at least six feet in height along the, can we put a limit on no greater than? Because we saw what the fence went up on the other side of the Alpine Motel, ended up being what, a twelve-foot fence? And that's rather unsightly, so I.
I think that was for the, uh, the RV parking area.
Which hadn't been approved at that point. So I'm just, my concern is that a fence of at least six feet in height a, and no greater than would probably be something that I would, would want to see in here.
No greater than what?
Well, that's something we could set. I would imagine eight feet is sufficient.
I think, uh, doesn't City Order say something that to be taller than six feet?
It does, but this says at least six feet, so do we make it six feet, or do we make it between six and eight feet?
Yeah.
Or?
I, I'm okay with no greater than eight feet.
Is, where, where is the fence gonna be located?
Is this, yeah, behind the structure?
I, that's some clarification, I guess, because one of the things we don't have in front of us is the site plan. That, I mean, the site plan that you provided to the urban renewal district, we don't have, so haven't seen, so we're kind of flying blind here in terms of talking about landscaping and.
We, we didn't propose any fencing, um, the requirements by the city, yeah, that.
The trash container is required to be screened from view, and I'm, I'm guessing that that's where the fence would come in.
Oh, okay.
And so, I, I'm just, I just think we need to do that. And I was surprised under controlled access, this is the application includes communications between the applicant and MDT. And we didn't get anything like that, it did not include it, and it included the traffic flow plan, which again, we didn't get.
Oh.
So, uh, I don't know. Do you have that?
This is not a design review, so that's why we don't have any exhibits.
But traffic flow plans are important.
Now, that, yeah, that should have been, that was all part of the application packet, so I'm not sure why you didn't get that, since that's, I'm sorry, that didn't make it to you.
And then I know that there's been, um, I know that one of your conclusions was that increased traffic. And frankly, I don't think it would increase traffic. I think it would increase slowing down and pulling out. But I don't think it's gonna create traffic by itself. Um, so I wasn't as, I wasn't really concerned with the traffic, although, you know, Boyd sign is pretty big.
Pretty big.
Cody has, do you have that document in front of you, Cody? If, if you shared your screen, would folks be able to see that?
Um, let me see, let me pull it up here. I think it's on your shared drive, actually. Let me find it.
The other thing I noticed in here is, you know, under conditions of approval, is basically like the applicant shall obtain a building permit from the city, so some of that was not really applicable to this. And, um, should have been not just a boilerplate. Trust me being picky.
On this, on this screening, there was there was a section in here, I'm trying to find it, um, we talked about the fencing, and, and I, I guess that's the same clarification.
Number eleven, any trash containers shall be screened from view.
I have that, but then I thought I saw somewhere else where there would be a fence.
Didn't you say earlier the fence is behind the kiosk to block all of the?
Well, that's something that we would have talked to Fred about, because eventually he's gotta, so we gotta move those two plows back behind the camera RVs, and I would like the fence to kind of block.
Running back.
That's what I was.
Yeah, because he's got.
To block the unsightly.
Correct.
And then you, I'm sure it's just common sense, you'd have the dumpster behind the fence.
Right, right.
Because it's unsightly anyway.
Exactly, but we haven't talked to Mr. Brewer about that yet.
Okay, so we're kind of talking about two fences, one fence to screen the dumpster and another fence along the backside of the, the property.
Right.
Oh, I thought it was just one fence.
The bath, yeah.
Or could it be the one fence, and it would have to walk to get to the back? The other thing that I noticed in here was about a noise complaint that had been, uh, is on file. That there was an existing. Uh, page eleven, noise or hazard complaints are on file for business that are currently or have previously been. Um, did we look into those, uh, hazard or noise complaints to see what, what they were? Do they concern this kiosk and drive-through?
No, it's just for the property itself, and I don't have the details of it. I was just informed they're on file. But not for the coffee business previously there.
That's done for me.
Three?
Sorry, you, go ahead.
Go ahead, Cody.
Mayor and board, I can't get my screen to share, but, uh, mayor, I did send you an email that, with that application, I'm not sure.
If you, if you have it, I will make it so you can share your screen. You should now be able to share your screen.
There we go. Bear with me, it's thinking. Alright, are you seeing that now?
Yeah.
So, scroll down. Um, this is the email between MDT and the applicant.
Can we make that bigger?
Or could you read it to us?
Or can you blow it up on your, your own laptop there?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, it's like as big as it goes. Oh, no. Oh, let me see if I can make it, get bigger. Is that better? Yeah.
I still can't read it from here.
Affirmative.
I can read it for you.
Yeah, go ahead, that would be great.
Yep, Chris Marshall emailed MDT, said, hello, I was given your names by the city planning director in Red Lodge. I am planning to open a coffee kiosk at the above address and would like to know what I will need to do with MDT regarding the impact to Highway two twelve. Can either of you help me? I will need a permit from M, will I need a permit from MDT or just a statement? Thank you for your time. And the response from Zach Kirkmo, MDT Billings District Traffic Engineer, was Chris. And the response from Zach Kirkmo, MDT Billings District Traffic Engineer, was, Chris, assuming there are no physical changes within US 212 right-of-way, and the site layout provides adequate queue storage to keep vehicles from backing up onto US 212, you will not need any permitting or anything from MDT. And then, this is, uh, the traffic flow. I'm not sure how to make that better for you, because I'm not sure what you're seeing.
It, we're, we're seeing it pretty full screen right here, so that's good.
Okay.
Real good.
Okay.
Window on the north side.
So-
Be on both sides.
It could be on both sides.
Oh, both sides.
So, yeah, and then we're, we're gonna landscape where the drive-through used to be to negate anybody thinking of still, and there'll be shelves on the two side as well.
In the front, between the highway and the building, or be the landscaping kind of thing. Want me to get out?
If, if you wanna go point some.
Oh, okay. We showed the old version too, which some of you may-
So, before, you could see it here, that's where they used to come through.
Right.
But to, for me, that's only really convenient for people coming this side and not really from this side, and then you couldn't really, anybody would, whatever.
Right.
So, we're gonna have them come through around this way, and then they could come out here, and then anybody coming through this way could also come out and turn around there, I believe is what.
So, using the two side windows instead of the front window.
And then the landscaping and stuff would be here. It basically make it cosmetically pleasing to the eye from 212.
So, the, the driveway that's on the south there, that's also going to be used by the rest of the buildings? The cleaning crew, they're gonna use that driveway?
Before them, before they're building there, that's their right-of-way.
That's what they've been using.
The church and the-
Yeah, that old church building. So, they come in and they pull up right, right, in the parking lot, yeah.
While, while you're up, could you kind of point out your plans for, uh, blacktoping, blacktop and-
Yeah, so, we, this would all have to be asphalt, all the way around, that would all have to be asphalt. And then my parking would be here, right at the rear, so it wouldn't be-
Be in the back of the building?
Correct. So, that's why when we talked to the, the company to asphalt it, he said that he wasn't sure if he was gonna have to lay down a base, but from the area and the description we gave him, that's what he was thinking, and that's the, that, and that would be that.
And when I showed this to Courtney, she said I would only have to asphalt, you know, this. But this over here is part of this building, and I didn't have to worry about that. So, I'm not asphalting, we're not gonna do all of that, just-
Hey, Jeff, we, I can't see where she's pointing to, I'll just have to take your word for it here, but did she point where the staff is gonna park?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it would be to the back of the, back of that building that you see where the arrows are going around, the building there is, is the kiosk.
That condition that, that, that would be the specifically designated area of more direct wording, or do we not?
I think if we want to add more direct wording, we can.
I, I just said she will designate an area for staff parking, not should, but she will.
Yeah.
Of where it was.
Right, as it reads right now, it says staff parking and a loading unloading area. Now, you're saying will be designated and located on the side or rear of the principal structure and is prohibited between the structure and the highway.
Yeah, it would be the rear, because the side, both sides are actually customer traffic.
The other question I had, mostly from the applicant, is you pointed out that there could be someone towing a horse trailer. And if you only do a ribbon of blacktop, then they're gonna be driving off the blacktop to swing out. It, I mean, it's for cars, I understand, but if you really have somebody towing something, then they're gonna be falling off the asphalt in order to make the turns, correct?
Yes. Well, we, we, he, he told me, the asphalt guy, that it would be about 13 feet wide. So, I think when we, you know, when we have that tur, and he knows about coming around the back of the building, I think he could provide an arc that would be sufficient, you know, accommodate, to accommodate that when he's laying the asphalt.
Okay.
Oh, Jeff, did she also point out where the back fence was gonna go?
I was gonna ask that, did, can-
It, you can't see it in the picture, but, so, there's the two, um, plows, and then there's a, there's a length section, and then there's an RV camper. So, what I was telling her is we need those plows completely moved behind where the other kind of utility stuff is, and then where that camper, that's where the fence would be.
Yeah, these are old, just-
Yeah, it has a shoulder.
They got things lined up back here, that people pay him to store them back there. So, we, we were wanting to have the, you know, the fence come in.
It's not, be that further.
Yeah, behind, behind the building to hide all of that storage. It'd be right here. Yeah.
Okay, so, to adjacent to running salvage area.
Yeah.
Um, but it would be to hide aesthetically all of the stuff he's storing behind.
Yeah.
I, I get it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Much better.
And it would run, you know, south to north, but it's, okay.
You could even put the dumpster behind that same, that's what she was saying, yeah.
And, and the height of the fence that you're talking about?
Sixty-eight feet.
Sixty-eight feet, which is legal.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, it's really just for me, for looking professional, you know, what if the guests are coming in and the customers are coming in, as, as much as we can block that being within those realms, and I'm sure there's gonna be tops of it, but it'd still look better.
Well, I would say that it's, it, you know, it's evident as a business owner that you want it to be as aesthetically pleasing as possible.
Yeah.
And honestly, a six-foot fence, because everything else is so far back, would probably suffice.
Yeah.
Because of the distance.
Yep, yeah, yeah, true.
Hey, Jeff, I'm s, I'm still trying to figure out where the back fence is. I see the boats and the campers there. I see the little white building in behind what would be the kiosk. I mean, how far back is the back fence gonna go?
Okay, first of all, that tree line and those cars are, are Lazzola's property, so that's not-
Oh, that's right, yeah.
That's not his property.
The fence line would be from that Boyd, that property over to the north, um, to the, you know, to-
You're just, the grassy area is, is Brewer's property.
Mm-hmm.
The cars on that other side and those trees there, that's all Lazzola's.
Yeah.
The, the Boyd's billboard is Lazzola's property.
Yeah, right.
So, we're not even talking about that. We're just talking about, like, that white structure, which looks like maybe a truck to me or something.
Yeah, that's not a building, that's just a truck.
That's probably a bug.
The fence would be right behind that, correct?
Correct, and they would wanna move all of the, the stuff behind the fence.
Kind of if you took an, a ruler and the back of the building that's on the car right, and draw it right across.
Right there.
Would be where the fence would be.
A north, that would be a north-south fence that would go across the back of the building on the right. Is that what I'm hearing?
Is that your cursor, Dave?
Yeah, that's, that's my cursor. What I can do is just praise her finger, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if Al is seeing that cursor.
Do you see the cursor?
No.
Cody's-
Do you see the white?
I only see my cursor.
Yeah.
If you look at the right side with those-
Well, no, that is logical.
It's below that white dot on the left.
More or less, if you look where that large tree is.
Yeah.
It would be, it would be a line that goes to the south of that, to the, the, the bare area or the street.
Right, okay.
Free as it presents in the picture.
And it would go to the road, uh, to the road, and then go east-west after that?
I don't think there would be any east-west fence, no.
No east-west.
We're talking about the drive, not the road.
No.
Okay, I, I think I have a picture now, thank you.
I think just the height.
All right.
So, and they can go to eight feet legally?
If, if we say that, yeah. Otherwise, six.
Do you have any bigger fence?
I, I think I, I think I got it. Thank you.
And Sandy's point, conditional use is only going to apply to the area within the fence, is that correct?
Yeah.
I would say only to that, that kiosk. I wouldn't say that whole area.
Oh, behind the kiosk and left.
It has to include the road that goes on the-
Yeah, the drive-through has to be included.
I'm just thinking of the negative.
We'll need to add a condition for that, Al.
Is that? That, if I understood, the fenced area from the big tree north-south to the, to the road, I'd be fine with that, uh, rather than be specific to that building, I would just say the area within that fence. Cause there was no other buildings in there, I don't think, that might, uh, might be long.
No. Here, here's my concern, Al, and I'm not saying that the applicant has his plan, but the, doesn't the conditional use for a drive-and-run with the land?
Yeah.
Or does it not?
Yes, it does.
It does. It runs with the plan. So, let's say McDonald's wants to come in and put in a little drive-through there, the drive-through's already been approved, and now you're saying the whole block of land is a drive-through, and so that's why I'm, I'm concerned. That's why I wanted to make sure that the drive-through was a drive-through for that kiosk. I don't care if it includes the whole land, but for that kiosk, and that's why I was asking to score footage of it.
How could that be word crafted?
That makes sense, Sandy.
So, you know, you always gotta think of how you can do this.
Is it a 136 square foot building?
Right, the conditional use holds to a 136 square foot building.
Yeah, and I, I would be fine with that if we made sure that it was conditioned to that, that building. We could even expand it to 150 square feet.
There you go.
What are, what are other people's thoughts about that?
Al was just thinking, I, you know, when you try to picture it all, the part, I couldn't picture, and I think you've kind of filled it in, is how do you know who on SWAT on that, on that property, and it's, or is your area leased from who is the big owner in the sky or what? And if, we could define it based on, again, the simplest way would be define it based on the size and perimeter of the kiosk.
We're not leasing any land, we're only leasing the building.
Okay, yeah, okay, well, then that would probably be the best way is to describe it based on the actual building.
That kind of consensus to add that as a condition?
Yeah.
I'd like to see that, yeah.
Al?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
So, do we wanna come back and add, address that? What was that, Cody?
Tell me the wording you were kind of thinking of on that.
Think, you wanna take a stab at that?
You're so good at it. Al, I, I would defer to you.
Well, I think, so it'd be condition 15.
Yep.
And it would be, I guess, along the lines that the conditional use per, permit would only apply to this coffee kiosk and the building of 136 square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
That work?
Yeah.
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 All right.
Again, while we're amending conditions, did we amend condition 6? Did I get approval to do that?
I'm okay with that, how about the rest of the board?
What was it again?
To change the word should to will.
Oh.
Staff parking and a loading unloading area will be designated.
Do you know, do you have these conditions in front of you? Do you know what's in there?
I have it on my phone.
Yeah, no, we're fine with that.
All right.
I'm done.
Marie?
Let me just say that being a fellow-
Did we change the condition to, uh, did we change condition 10 from six feet to between six and eight feet?
Oh, yeah, that's the fence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eight to what?
Eight feet.
Yep.
So, you're okay with that?
Do, do we, I mean, I'm okay with six feet, but do we wanna, do we really need to add eight feet?
The problem says at least six feet in height, and that's where it leaves it. Then we would have to say either, but no greater than eight feet.
I get that.
Yeah.
It'll be seven, because I don't wanna call-
They're, they're gonna do six, so we just say six feet.
Then it should say that the fence at six feet in height, and take out the at least.
No greater than six feet. Six feet.
Will be at least is out of your zoning regulations.
What is the zoning rig?
It says at least six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you'd have to change your zoning rig, would it be no, no greater than eight feet? That's zoning rig.
We don't have a height restriction. We do for residential.
What, what did you say, Cody?
The wording at least six feet, that's out of your zoning rigs, but you can easily add on to that, that, you know, it has to be at least six feet, Al, but no greater than eight feet, that's fine, you just have to maintain the six feet, cause that's straight out of your rigs.
That's why I have my zoning rigs in front of me, and that's why I was suggesting that we put a maximum of eight feet on it.
Oh, I see, that's what I think.
I heard a comment earlier, you didn't want a 10- or 12-foot fence.
Yeah.
So, do you think it's best that we just say that a fence no greater than eight feet, call it, call that good?
I think you have to specify the six feet minimum, cause that's what the zoning regulations state, but I think you can add no greater than eight feet.
Well, if the minimum is six feet, and we don't, we don't say any, anything about eight feet.
Doesn't say minimum, it says at least six feet, so that means I could build a four-foot fence. And so, it, it has to be at least six feet high, at, at, that's the minimum, right?
Yeah.
You don't want it any higher than eight.
But we don't, if, we don't say, we don't say higher than eight in zoning, we just say at least six, six feet, right?
But Cody said we could add no greater than eight.
Yeah.
Or, or could we just say that there would be a fence, no, uh, that's six feet?
I'm okay with that too, if it's okay, because our zoning doesn't say that.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think you need to stick with what your zoning says, that at least six feet in height, but you could say, ah, greater. Yeah, no, and no greater than six feet or something, if that's where you want it capped, but you gotta stick with the minimum language.
Maybe I missed something here, but earlier on in the conversation, I heard somebody say they did not want a 10- or 12-foot fence, and I agreed with that.
Yeah.
So, that's why I'm coming up with six to eight feet.
I propose for number 10 that we say that at least six feet in height, but no greater than eight feet. That's what I would propose to, to put it down.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, let's put that.
So, that keeps our at least, and caps it at eight.
Eight.
Sandy, you said something about the building permit, and I saw that it was requirement, but we don't have to get a building permit, correct? Cause we're not building.
I know, that's why I was kind of looking at, at one of the conditions.
Yeah.
And, and it's actually a, you know, a boilerplate, saying that you have to get building permits, and there's also in here that if artifacts are uncovered.
Right.
Um, which I-
Maybe while paving.
Yeah, I don't know, um, there are some things in here that are more boilerplate.
Okay.
That really don't apply.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
They are, but I do wanna mention that you will have to get a certificate of occupancy, so that does go hand-in-hand with the building permit. So, I think you do still wanna reference that, just to make sure all the pieces are in place, cause some of the improvements might qualify. I don't know what Brian's using as his building permit, but, um, you just wanna make sure everybody's on the same page with these. And, yeah, I understand the artifact thing, but that was actually my exact thought, was the paving, so.
And I don't have any trouble just leaving it in. I mean, it doesn't serve any purpose, but-
Yeah.
Yeah, could I, could I go back to number six and just clarify with Al? Um, I know you're concerned with the word will for parking, but it, we should also clarify that it's designated and located on the rear.
Yeah.
And outside of, right, on that, that condition.
I'm okay with that, I think the applicant said that's what she would do, and you could put that specific wording in there. I just want a specific designated area, wherever that is.
I think our zoning says side or rear, and that's why that's in there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, either side or.
Oh, I see, yeah, side or rear, okay.
So are we gonna change six to be will be designated, uh, at, on the rear?
Well, you wouldn't put it on the side anyway.
Okay.
At the rear, thank you. At the rear of the principal structure.
Yeah, and I'll, I can add in there south side in parentheses, so it's clear.
Okay.
West side.
Yeah, that's the west.
Yeah, that's west.
Oh, west, sorry. Good grief.
So we've amended three conditions, is that correct, Jeff?
Yeah, six, ten, and we added fifteen.
Yep.
And we amended, um, ten.
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, Marie.
Oh, boy.
Is there anything you'd like to add, Al, before I start?
No, I'm good.
Okay, good. Let me preface this by saying, as a fellow business owner, twenty-two years in this town, I own Boyd's. And I'm a proponent of business, I'm really glad that you're starting something, I, I, so I'm happy with that. I will, I will vote to approve this, of course, and I just want to welcome you to the business community. Well, thank you very much. I have no issue here.
Good.
Polly?
All my issues have been covered, so, thank you.
Sue?
That's discussed, I'm concerned, and that's Shawnee.
Okay.
There, there was a question from online when we were fighting with the mute that came up, and, and it says, have the Red Lodge needs priority survey results been shared? I, I can't add any more direction to that, but I think, I think that's revitalization plan.
That's coming up on our.
That's the next.
All right. Um, I probably have, I don't have any problems with, with the proposal, but I do have some questions, I guess, to you, Cody, a little bit. Um, one is, I, I think there's a mistake under the property description where it says, and Ronnie's Auto. I think that now is Red Lodge Auto, maybe, but it's not Ronnie's Auto anymore.
Good to know, thank you.
You may want to make a change there.
Yep.
Are you talking about the front building, the Red Lodge Auto, because Ronnie still has the back salvage area where you saw those cars, so you might want to include both.
Okay. Perfect.
Just add Red Lodge Auto.
And, um.
Did we need to add anything? No, we did, never mind. We got it.
I can't wait to see how you keep seeing us. It'll be great, it's such a nice place right now.
I'm from Red Lodge, this is coming back home after forty some years.
Cool.
To be in this place I grew up, so. Oh, it'll be great.
Yeah, well, we're just so super excited.
And now everybody sat into town gets coffee, too.
Yes, yeah.
Well, I like the logo that you had, too, that's cute.
Thank you, yeah.
Um, Cody, I, on your findings of fact on the staff analysis under item A.
Yeah.
Uh, you said this site is not identified in the active transportation plan for future trail connectivity?
It's not, um, it's in that little chunk along the highway there that is under that MDT jurisdiction, and when looking at that plan, it's an odd little chunk, it didn't make a lot of sense to me, but no, it is not.
It's been your plan.
Been a pretty major discussion is, is.
Yeah, so there.
So I'm surprised that that's not in the active transportation plan.
It's, when you look at the map in there of the identified areas, there's a little, there's this property, and I want to say one or two adjacent to it that are left out of that, and I'm not, there wasn't any explanation, I was just assuming it was because it was in that highway corridor, and some of the uses right there, you know, there's the industrial more type of use across the street. Um, but the plan identifies all the area, the properties around it, so it was kind of interesting, especially to the west.
Yeah, that is, and that kind of leads me to the discussion a little bit on the sidewalk, too, and the exclusion, and I guess it would have been a little bit helpful probably to have some information about, I mean, the intent of why that was taken out of the sidewalk requirement was taken out of, uh, the zoning regulations was to not have these, uh, these islands of sidewalk that just began and at the property line. But as things have changed, and particularly in, in this situation, um, with the Highway two-twelve corridor, um, we've been deferring any requirement for sidewalks pending, uh, MDT's up, upgrade to two-twelve, so.
Yeah.
So at that point, um, and, and this is again why I kind of refer back to the, um, active transportation plan, because it's, my understanding is the multi-use path is now going to be along the west side of two-twelve. And I think particularly in any future things that come before the board, it would be helpful to have that information in front of us in terms of how any proposal is going to be either impacted or needs to accommodate that, um, in the, in the future. So that's just, I guess, just one suggestion that, that I would, would have. In, in your conversations with MDT, did anything come up in terms of how they were thinking about, uh, what was going to occur within the right-of-way that they've acquired?
You know, Courtney spoke with them, and I think at that, our last U R D meeting, she had talked about speaking with them about it, do you remember that?
I don't.
In December, oh, okay. Um, so I don't, you know, I don't think, she said there was no concern at this time.
Okay.
That would be a way down the road, kind of, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's not going to affect what, what you do, I'm just kind of bringing that up as something that, that would be helpful to have information in, in front of us as.
Issues that have nothing to do. Yeah, like the.
Have you, has the city received anything from MDT about their plans at all, like anything, any word?
The latest I saw was a notice from NDTP that went out to their mailing list that they're in the process of developing their final design. And that, planning on having a public meeting or something.
Okay, yeah, it's a little bit tricky to pull stuff in until they've got a document, you know, but it's definitely worth keeping an eye on, cause as that info comes available, it should be pertinent, for sure.
Yeah, and that's, again, why I was a little surprised that there wasn't more specific wording in the active transportation plan about the multi-use path out to the two-mile bridge. And I, I guess you addressed this, but there is no need for hookups to city water and sewer, is that correct?
That's correct, we have the water guy out there, looked at, looked at it, it's actually on a well, the water, and, um, he said, you don't have to do anything until the property is full. Then they'll have to hook up to the city wall.
All right.
But we do have to put a meter on the, um, just be able to track the, the waste.
Yeah.
All right, um, I just had a note here, again, on, there's a, under compatibility on page nine, under conclusions, uh, there's proposed color and materials of the structure. Do you have any thoughts or ideas in terms of what, what you're?
It's gonna be a navy blue with a white trim, basically kind of an ode to Red Lodge Rams without the neon, or gold.
Okay.
Yeah. The roof is in good shape, so we don't have to do anything.
And then, uh, Cody, uh, under C, minimize adverse impacts and conclusions. Um, that last bullet, increased traffic should be a board commission consideration. What were you thinking there in terms of something that we should need to add or consider in?
Yeah, I, I just think as long as there's discussion, cause one thing I know from evaluating all of these things, development, subdivision, CUPs, traffic is a matter of opinion. And so knowing that, I think it's important that on the record, at least there's conversation, do you think increase, there will be increased traffic from previous uses, from being vacant? Do you think that will impact, I mean, there are residences nearby, it's a mixed-use area, so just as long as those conversations are had, if you choose not to do anything about that or condition anything, that's great. I mean, clearly, MDT has the major jurisdiction over the right-of-way, but do you anticipate impacts? And I expect there would be a split on that of yes and no, so, or maybe all no, and great, onward we go.
Okay. The other comment I had on nuisances, it talks about smells and noise and, but one of the things that, and I think also in terms of shield, shield, shielding the garbage, I'm wondering if we need to address bear-proof garbage containers and make that part of the, a condition.
Is that something that's standard? Do you have that in standard language in the city, anywhere in your regulations?
Like ours, our, our dumpster up the back of our shop is bear-proof, I think it comes standard with the commercial.
I think so, too.
Because if you're commercial, you have to pay, that you're not, it's not paid for by the city, so. And they don't want to clean up the mess, not, we, it came standard with our stuff. So, and, yeah, and we're not even food. It makes total sense, we understand that their population, their business. If it's not standard, you'll put it down there, trust me.
Okay.
I think that goes without saying.
So that's something we really don't need to address as a condition.
I think Republic gives you that.
Right, yeah.
Okay. And the other question, I guess, of the applicant I had, is are there, do you have any plans for some outdoor seating or anything at all, or?
Yeah, I think we mentioned that in the, kind of in the narrative part. We do plan to do, you know, landscaping and have a picnic table, and, you know, two or three, like lawn chairs or have a minnow or whatever, you know, yeah, so there's, people walk up, they can get their drinks and have a nice seat. Especially with Alpine ending right there. Yeah, with the motel right next door, we hope that, you know, people will walk over and do that.
But you don't anticipate somebody driving up and parking and getting something that's.
We're gonna place some, you know, some bushes type of, you know, kind of protective thing there so that they will know that this, well, and with the asphalt, the asphalt is, this is the driving line, this is the.
I guess what I was getting at is, is there a need for additional parking besides the staff parking?
We don't believe so, I mean, it, it is a drive-through facility. People, if people come in and, and park over, let's say they park over at the cleaning building, walk over, you know, we'll, we'll certainly, you know, advise them to, next time when you do a drive-through, I mean. I think it's just more to accommodate pedestrians, just to have some type of seating area for pedestrians. If we, if it comes to the conclusion that people are trying to park, and it becomes an issue, then we'll eliminate the, the, that area, we'll keep it nice and landscaped and keep it, you know, cosmetically pleasing, but I don't know what people are gonna assume and whatnot, and so I think that's something that we're gonna have to address in the moment. But I think the asphalt will help kind of clarify with them, but if we see an issue arising, then we'll eliminate the seating.
Probably, probably the asphalt along with landscaping.
Yeah.
I guess, that was the other item that he had brought up with the U R, the, U R D agency, was you talked a little, quite a little bit about landscaping. Um, since that's typically one of our requirements as well, maybe you could share with the board, with the planning board, I guess, what your plans and intentions are from a landscaping standpoint?
Well, if I remember correctly, we didn't, I think it was, what, thirty-five hundred or? Well, I think our only budget is two thousand landscaping, because we're gonna do that ourselves. More like plant or box and flowers. Yeah, five-a-side, plant or boxes, flowers, and then along the two sides, um, you know, miniature lavender or lilac plants, or, you know, some kind of bushes. Kind of blocks it in, I'd say. I like to lay down some grass these, where I just don't know how it's gonna take right there with that ground, but just to see, you know, I, we're not gonna lay sawed down, cause then you're going into a much larger scale of pricing from a landscape. Isn't it, just curious, is this required with this?
Continue watching.
Are you just asking?
Well, well, I'm asking, but typically landscaping is a requirement.
For the U R D.
What's that?
It's for the U R D, the landscaping is important to, you know, to, you know, negotiate that.
I don't think so, we're not doing a design.
But we're not doing a design review with this application.
Correct.
So we're just asking out of curiosity. Right.
Um, I'd hate to see any landscaping get, um, torn asunder by a plow, snowplow. Um, you have with your neighbors there, a plan for plowing and piling large amounts of snow and stuff like that without damaging all your landscaping.
Well, we're gonna have to, cause I've been kind of watching how they do it now, so we're gonna have to, I don't know who some it uses, or is it something that was a school, cause they have the school buses that are stored back there. Yeah, the school buses parked back there.
Yeah.
Uh, that would be a Fred question, I would think, the owner of the whole two acres, yeah.
So you can work that out.
Yeah, yeah.
I did have a new question. Um, since the water is well-water, is it required somewhere down the line that you have the water tested?
Yeah, we will have it tested every six months.
Every six months, okay.
We spoke with the water health inspector, yeah, health inspector, yeah, somebody.
I thought there might be somebody involved that would know that, okay.
Definitely, yeah.
Okay.
And, yeah, the last thing I had was on the sign, proposed sign, do you, or your signage. Um, it talks about what our requirements are here, but, um, what, what are your plans for a, a sign? Typically, that's something, I guess, that also, I guess, is a question for you, Cody, is signs review comes before the planning board for design review as well, so, um, whether a building is existing or not.
And then, yeah, then Courtney told me that the sign, I got the sign application. She told me I only needed to give that to her, is that correct?
I believe so. If it's within the parameters.
Within the size, correct? Yeah, we, we know the grade requirement, Courtney showed me all of that. And we just thought getting this approved was the most important thing to add. And then the signage, I talked to her about it, what we were thinking of doing, and she's fine with it, I just haven't submitted it yet. Do you guys know that the metal sign is kind of? It's already there. But there's a little section to the left of it, so what we were thinking was doing elongated signs, so it's closest to two-twelve, and then I want to kind of clean up that sign as is, because they have fan bags on it, I don't personally think that looks the most professional, and kind of get it looking.
I don't personally think that looks the most professional, and kind of get it looking much better.
The ground level, yeah.
It'll be a pedestal style sign, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then, as far as lighting the sign, what are your plans for that?
Just an open sign in the window, I mean, you mean.
No, I mean, as, as far as advertising, that you, this, you're gonna have a sign on this, on the street sign.
Double sided hanging sign, not lighted.
On a banner, probably on the front of the building, you know, Bojones Room now open, or something, you know, just across the, above the window there. And that, that would be it. Cause I thought that we couldn't have it lighted, if it was that close to two twelve, is that a misunderstanding?
Well, there, there are lighted signs, but they're, since they're internally lit.
Okay. I mean, I would prefer it to be lighted, but I'll have to look into how though.
But I guess, are you, I guess, are you talking about a, a sign on the building that's about being, that just advertises the, your business? Or are you also talking about a sign that's on the, on, on highway two twelve, or along highway two twelve that also advertises? I guess that's.
Yeah, so we have the sign, we have the sign on the metal, and it's, well, you're gonna be close to two twelve. What she's saying is, you know, when we open, we'd like to have a banner on the building that just said Bojones Room now open. That obviously would stay up perfectly, but, you know, just as a eye catching.
I think on page six, there's, um, what she was talking about was the sandbags. And you can see that, that there had been a sign there.
Yeah.
It's still there.
That gets destroyed from time to time, and that's why the sandbags, and, and that's where you're proposing to put kind of a pedestal sign.
Well, we, we're proposing just to use, because Fred owns that sign, and he does have a storage business there. So he's got that information on there and an RV parking or something. So, we, we, we're just gonna add to that existing podium that he has already there.
So does Duane rent, rent from him too, on the back? Because Duane plows, I think you're.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm honest, I know all, I know it's got the storage, you've got the.
So it's pre-existing, yeah.
Business, and then people park this random thing that they're paid for, so.
So Fred owns the mini storage, and then Duane owns the building behind Fred. Okay. I'm just thinking out loud, so.
So on this photo, it looks like the sign is actually tipped over.
Yeah.
Hence the sandbags.
What's that?
Hence the sandbags.
Yeah.
Every time you go by, it's different, but.
Good tumbleweed.
If I could get that to look at, then we're gonna change it.
Yeah, he, he said we could move that out of the way, but, yeah. But we thought, well, it's already there, and it does have this arm that comes out that we can hang our sign on, so, you know.
Why not use it?
And when you get to that point, you're gonna file your application for the sign.
Yeah.
This has nothing to do with this application right now.
Correct.
So it's just a question we're asking, which is kind of overreached, but this is not a design review. Am I, am I?
You're there.
Understanding that? Okay.
I would disagree with the comment about being overreached.
Well, that's my comment.
I think it's been my experience that design review has come before this board.
But this application is not design review.
It's not. But there's a separate process for this sign review, design review of signings. So, as example, on Broadway, somebody puts in, puts up a new sign, that comes before the board. It's an existing building, there might be an existing sign there. But that comes before the board for review, is design review.
We just lost it.
Yeah.
The fact that I'm, the fact that I'm asking these questions is relevant to what we do as part of the planning board.
Is that a part of this application?
Well, number eight is a sign permit shall be obtained.
Yeah, so I do have the permit application.
Yeah, it, that's one of the conditions.
Yeah.
And I'm just asking, what is, what is your proposal, or what, what, what are your thoughts in terms of what?
Well, like I said, the sign that's there in front of that.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah, it is, it is standing, but there's an arm that comes out here, and we were going to. Just put ours along, you know, just right down the side there of that arm. Double sided, of course. And then the only other signage, I was thinking is on, just a, a banner type thing on the building, and that was it. I don't, we wouldn't have power out there to, to lighten it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a whole new project. Yeah.
Okay.
Story, another permit too.
Hey Jeff, are we ready to move this forward?
Yes, now, now we are.
I think we're at the written comments question.
What's that?
We're at the written comments portion of the procedure.
Um, yeah. And we, we haven't received any written comments, have we, Cody?
No.
And I, I think there's no rebuttal from behalf of the applicant, right? And anything else you wanna add, Cody?
I don't.
And so, um, we'll go ahead and, uh, entertain a motion to approve the staff report.
I move to adopt the staff report, RL CU twenty-three dash oh-two as findings of fact, with the one change to the property description, to Ronning Auto and Red Lodge Auto.
Second.
Hey, Cody, could you call for the vote?
I can.
Well, do we have to include the amended portion of the conditional use in this?
Yeah.
Not yet, that's, or is that part of the staff report, Cody?
This whole document in front of you is your staff report, so yeah, you would wanna include all the amendments as well.
Include the amendments.
Yep.
As amended.
Perfect.
I will show adopted as amended, perfect.
Are you ready for a roll call?
Yes.
All right, Al.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Susan.
Yeah.
Marie.
Yes.
Polly.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
All right, so I'll ask for a motion to approve or deny the conditional use permit.
I move to approve the conditional use permit for the property legally described as Red Lodge North Annexation. S twenty-two, T O seven south, R twenty east, Red Lodge. Eighty-four annexed, tract one dash A dash two, certificate of survey twelve eighty-five, fourth amended. Left the highway right of way, subject to the following conditions, as amended.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call, Cody?
Al.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Susan.
Yes.
Marie.
Yes.
Polly.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
You're approved.
So I'll just follow up, but I'll get the amendments to Jeff and Al, and then, um, when that's good to go, I'll send that on to the applicant as well.
All right.
Would you send the amendments to both Jeff and I, please?
Yes, that's, sorry if you didn't hear me, that's the plan.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, next on the agenda is, under old businesses, update on the downtown revitalization plan and growth policy, Cody?
Yeah, well, everyone got through the holidays. Uh, we've closed the survey, and you had a great turnout. I'm not gonna get into the specifics of it, cause my goal more is to line out a timeline for you. I'm aiming to bring the survey results in a presentable format to the board through advertising of that meeting as well in February. And then the next step would be March to form those focus groups and get the document moving forward. So, as long as everyone just knows that's what's coming down the line, it's still truckin'.
Are you planning on having another public forum?
Yeah, there will be more, for sure.
Could I make a suggestion that at the next public forum, you, uh, have a, a brief presentation of goals and expectations before you go to, um, you know, like you did last time, uh, with people going around the tables and looking at the various things and putting up their notes? I just think a more, not a lengthy, but a more formal presentation PowerPoint would be helpful.
Yes, no problem.
How many respondents have you received so far?
It was over three hundred.
Wow.
Mm-hmm. That was great.
Was, was there a mechanism in that survey that, um, a person could only respond once, or?
Yeah, well, only from one, it recognizes the, uh, servers or the computers, and, yeah. So it's not foolproof, I don't believe, but, yeah.
So if somebody logged on on two different computers, they could make two different responses?
I suppose so, yes. Did you do that, Jeff?
What's that?
Did you do that?
No, no, I. No, I didn't do that. I guess I'm, I'm just.
I'm just suspicious these monkey surveys were.
Is the survey still out there for people to respond? Do we need to re, do we need to resubmit it?
No, it's been closed.
It just seems three hundred is a, is a low number. I'm disappointed at that number, I was hoping.
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm not disappointed at all. I looked through some of the other survey results on like your short term rentals and all that, and I had heard numbers of thousands, but that actually was not the case when you look at the data, so three hundred is pretty good. It's a very good response rate, especially for something very specific to downtown, so.
Could you elaborate a little bit more on what your thoughts are about the focus groups of the nu, how many you're thinking of in, uh, in the, kind of the format?
Um, yeah, I, I'd rather go through it when we go through the survey data, so we have, cause I'd like to advertise it so we can get some more people involved and to hear the whole conversation, but, um, kind of a general goal is that you're on specific components. So, one would be more on the business end and the economic development of the business side. Uh, maybe one would be on land use, revitalization of dilapidated or properties that are sitting vacant, or could be repurposed. Um, so things of that nature. My thought is, it might be a little bit easier to start with kind, kind of a bigger picture draft snippet of those pieces of information, so that there's a place to start, and then whittle it to what each focus group is looking at. And then, bring everyone together to pull all that information into one collated document, and then take it through a series of forums and town hall style work sessions, so. That general enough?
Yeah, so as I understand it, you'd have a focus group that's a specific to historic buildings downtown, and maybe another one that's specific to accommodating, uh, pedestrian traffic.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, and a lot of that will be generated from the survey results themselves, cause those things became pretty clear out of those that responded, what, where the priorities are, so that's how we use that info.
Well, one of the, one of the comments, one of the comments that I, I received recently was sort of the importance of focusing on pedestrian friendly and, and, and the importance of having pedestrian connectivity between the residential areas and, and our community entrances to the, to the downtown his, area.
Yeah. Yep.
How, how do we, how do we gain focus on, on visitor groups? Have you got a thought or a plan for that?
Yeah, there's a few different, yeah, there's a few different methods, um, and obviously, I know that not that tourism is not there right now, but it's a different group, right? I mean, we know the bulk of what you see is when the weather's a little bit nicer. Um, so yeah, I have some different approaches to that, and I'm not gonna tell you what to do, but I plan to lay those out for you and let the community decide which route you wanna go, so.
I just think it's a group that's important to Red Lodge, and I'd just like to know their thoughts, and what they like and what they dislike, and.
Absolutely, yep.
Another thing I think is important, you'll be Cody, is to talk to the Business Alliance again. I, I, I don't have the questions in front of me, but the last meeting I went to, the feel of the room was that they felt pretty ghosted with this, how the survey came out to be, so I won't get a lot of details, but I really think it would be, uh, important to, you know, circle back again with them.
Of course.
They felt that it was out of touch in the end.
Yeah, of course. Yeah.
Anyway, something to think about there.
Yeah, that's kind of the tricky part with these. I mean, somebody has to be the driver, and on these grant sponsored planning documents, planning documents. And that generally lies with a board or commission that's been appointed, and yeah, you do it in a public forum, and you hope everyone comes to the table, not everyone always does. I did provide, um, and I'll get into this when I present the survey stuff to you next month, but, um, to try to offset some of that, cause I knew the concerns of the Business Alliance Group, um, at the open houses and when we did the Christmas stroll, we did provide, um, comment cards that were a little more specific to some of the questions, um, that I discussed with Tom and Jade and some of the others. So, we did get some feedback, um, trying to bridge that gap a little bit, but it's not perfect, but do the best we can, so.
Does anybody else have any questions for Cody on the revitalization plan, and where we're at, where we're going?
Nope.
Any thoughts or ideas?
We'll wait and see the, yeah, we'll wait and see the survey results.
So what, what your plan is at our, at first February meeting, or?
Yeah, it'll, it'll depend what you guys have going on, cause if you're obviously not gonna have a meeting, I know you'll have one, but if you don't have two, I'll go with whatever you end up, whichever date you have them or not, so I'll work with you on figuring that out, for sure.
Well, our, our next scheduled meeting is for the twenty-fourth of January, is that correct, right, Jeff?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do February for these for sure, just cause I wanna make sure I've got all the info pulled together. And I wanna put it in a format that the city can get on their website too, so everyone can access it.
We meet the second and the fourth.
Right.
Of the month, so the twenty-fourth is our next meeting.
Do you have meetings even if you don't have agenda items, or?
That, well.
Never happened.
That's up to the chair. But no, if we don't have anything, but, uh, I don't, I think with the things coming up with the growth policy review and stuff like that, we'll always have something, uh, to, to deal with, and we've got that priority list that I shared with you, so.
Yeah.
And, and we, I expect we'll be getting, or hopefully we'll be getting some direction from the mayor and the council on a couple of issues, um, in the few weeks, so I, I don't anticipate us having a zero agenda, but we can always.
Okay, I'll coordinate with you on that.
Yeah, I think our first February meeting is going to be February fourteenth, if I'm looking at the calendar right. And then there would be a meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Okay. All right.
All right, any anything else, I guess? Any written correspondence from the staff or staff communication? Anything else you want to add, Cody?
No, been just communicating with mayor a little bit on how to best help you most efficiently, so yeah, I think that's where we're at. I don't have anything else. Handful of inquiries about random land use issues and flood plain, but nothing that's come to fruition, so.
All right, any petitions communications from the audience?
Wait, I don't know if this is a Cody question or ask you that we'd like to open the business as soon as we can get it cleaned up and ready to go. But the pavement part, of course, won't happen until May when they open up the asphalt plant. So I understand we have to get a approval or to to go ahead and operate the business before that piece is done?
I don't think.
We didn't, we didn't make it a condition.
Well, we did make a condition.
We get permission to go ahead and.
Certificate of occupancy business license.
Yeah.
On the here.
Yeah, Jill was Brian, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you might wait till July for blacktop.
Yeah.
Dave Westwood, fourteen seventy-one came circle, also happened to be mayor.
Thank you.
Um, David, oh, um, so a couple of things, uh, there, I I tried to be good. An A minus maybe at least. I know it wasn't an A, but um, so the the earlier conversation on the Alpine development um, and the conditional uses and stuff, um, my ask would be that to have this board um, provide, just go back through the records and validate that that was a condition that fits there. And then if they'll forward that to me, um, that sounds to me like an administrative issue. And so I don't have a time machine. I can't go back and fix it. But what I can do is look at the process and find out how it happened and how do we make sure that there's not that breakdown? And probably what will be a little less than a comfortable conversation uh, with the developers. If they're, but but in my mind, if they were, because my recollection was that we had made that a condition, one of the conditional uses too. But if 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 uh, the the board president will get that documentation to me, then I will take it to follow up on it from an administrative side. And if we need to pull the developer in and have a conversation and say this was one of the conditions and it needs to be matched, um, then we can proceed with that. I can't speak to to why there was a breakdown. Uh, you only get to yell at me and stuff since January first, so, but but I will take that on. Um, and then the other question that I had, um, there were several comments on the U R D fund. This is why I asked you, please don't go away yet, because um, I appreciated that this wasn't there but and and I'd heard that there was an application that was done. Um, it is my understanding and 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 Jeff, you may know as well, but my recollection is that the U R D to to disperse those funds or when the fund, those funds are approved, that is a an act of counsel, the way that regulation is written. And I heard you say when, that we'd asked Courtney and she said we were good to go. And I just wanted to realign expectations that the, if if the understanding was that there was already an approval that was done, my understanding is that's not done. And I just wanted to reconcile that.
No, we knew that that was the first step and that city council had to vote on it. So we knew that.
Yeah, you're right.
Magic, yeah. They, U R D has that meeting, they approved it.
To go forward.
To go forward.
Okay, I was just, I just, I just heard one comment that that we were told we were good and I was like, oh. One of those, one of those bad comments, like I said, one, not unlike that we'll have with another development, theirs will be much more.
So can we expect some kind of what, letter from the council or do we go to the media?
It'll, it'll be an action item. I, it has not been raised for me. I have not seen that yet. Um, but I will reach out. One of the things I'm doing in my biggest pebble in my shoe, what to attack first, is is working with the list of those boards and finding out what what actions are there.
Okay.
So so, yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify if there was a confusion there sooner rather than later.
I think on on that, there was some question about how much, how many, how much funding would be available. That was sort of up in the air at that point. So I think, I think, as I recall, the, what the U R D agency said is we approve that pending or
contingent on.
Contingent on availability of funds. And I'm not sure myself what the next step is in terms of translating that request from the agency to the city council. That might be a question for.
My my reckon, my recollection now, keep in mind that that actually failed on my last time on city council and passed at the next meeting, um, so I need to go back and see what changes. But my recollection of what was in there was that that the approval ultimately and dispersion, et cetera, was was made by city council.
That's, that's correct. What I was getting at is just for this.
Yeah, I think there was a lot more than nineteen thousand dollars in there. I was pleasantly surprised. Pardon?
Yeah, twenty-five thousand, what we, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm thinking that was like a hundred and fifty. I mean, it was, it was, there was a comma in the number, so. Um, I I won't, I just, I just remember, I I remember being pleasantly surprised and then remembering that we had Alpine that was included within that, which which didn't necessarily surprise me. Um, and then the only other thing is I'll, I'll share with you guys. So one of the things I tried to address last night is a frustration, which which in fairness, thank you, um, because you guys illuminated it for me. Um, but there's a couple of of contracts and things that are coming up. Um, and and the way the division of duties is, is is the mayor goes out and negotiates and then works on a contract, but must get approval from the council to sign those contracts. And and after having watched the experience you all had, one of the things I made sure to do is please, old board who's going to ultimately approve this, give me the guidance and direction so I can come back with something you want to do. And I think that was part of the background of the frustration is you guys were getting direction, go work on this, go work on that, with with zero input from the board that was going to be approving it and they didn't even know it was in in the works. And so, um, we'll, we'll try, and and my my two cents would be to push back. If you have something and there's a question, is this coming from council, you know, when we have a new planning director in? By the way, that position, we made an offer. Um, my understanding, I have not talked to the person, so all of my understanding is secondhand information was that they did not accept it. I don't know if it was no or if it was no, that number doesn't work for me. So I don't know if it's a dead conversation or if we're starting over. Um, I've got a couple of different voicemail messages there and we'll continue to try a bit longer. Um, if we do end up re-advertising, I'll be reaching out to the to the board for for input um, on that position and to make sure we're advertising in the most appropriate spots. Um, but if you have a direction that you feel is coming from some channel other than guidance through the council, my input would be please push back and ask for clarification um, and the guidance, because I I I sat on this board for four years. I know how frustrating it is to put in all that time and then feel like it's tossed out and it's like, wait. And 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 I think it was, you know, let's make sure we get that input early on in the process from the board that ultimately has to approve it to do that. And I'm in that same position, so, um, like I said, for me, I recognize the red flags having watched you guys through it. So thank you for eliminating that problem and and I'll do what I can to 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 help do that. Um, and then there there are things that are on the administrative side, so following up and saying the planning board passes and this was a condition and that's not being followed. That's something that in my mind falls to the mayor and the administrative side of it. So once you guys can provide me proof that that's that's in there, um, searching down through your documentation, um, I will follow up and see if I can find out where the breakdown is so it doesn't happen again. But also, how do we fix it for the current situation? Because just because the bulk off drop doesn't mean it ceases to be a a condition of approval in my mind.
Yeah, on that, I guess that record would be here, but so I don't know who I would.
I have it in my computer.
Do you have it in your computer?
If if we do, I mean, and 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 in one sense, I could just go look at it, but I think we'll get there quicker if somebody here, whether that be
Cody probably.
President who is currently, you know, just in those minutes, if somebody can get that for me, um, that will then then I have to act on it as opposed to go find it and then act on it. And that just allows me to address a whole bunch of things.
Al, go ahead.
Dave, I appreciate that, Dave. Um, I'm I'm the invisible guy on the TV screen. Um, regarding the Alpine, I have a paper, I have a paper copy of the Alpine conditional use at home in Red Lodge. The final copy is is within the city of Red Lodge files. Cody should have that. Um, she she typically does not always redistribute the final edited approved copy to us. Um, and so if you want to see that and 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 if if Cody can find it or Courtney can find it and send it to me, I can compare it with with my notes and share it with Jeff and then we can forward it to you or you can just get it directly from from the current city files.
So just to prove, I heard you say, go break in through the basement window and it's on the desk?
No, it's, yeah, I mean.
I think I.
My copy at home just has written scribbled notes from our meeting of what what were the conditional uses were. The final uh, approved copy should be within the the city planning files. And and that's where I would have to get it from before I could send it to you or you can just get it directly.
I'm I'm hoping it's electronically somewhere as well, so even if we go the old method.
Typically, they are. It it is, the staff report is electronic and she edits the staff report per the planning board. And so it should all be electronic.
And if it falls on me to find it, I'll, I'll do that. I just think it'll, it'll happen more quickly if somebody.
If Cody and Cody and Courtney can get together and find it and send it to me, I'd share it with Jeff to make sure we got it. Then we can send it to you if that's what you want to do.
Um, one additional thing that maybe as we're sharing, if I'm listening to your comments, Al, um, is so I have talked with Cody and also with Chad, is that name, is that right? Cody is Chad, is the other individual from Great West?
Chad Hanson.
So so one of the, one of the conversations that we've had, um, and uh, and and this just comes from my past professional experience and I was very grateful to find out that it actually Chad was very much uh, of the same mindset. Um, so we've had members from our staff that have gone and then Great West picks them up. So like our planning director went to Great West and said, hey, can you get some jobs for, I'm sorry, our public works director went to Great West and said, hey, can you get some jobs where I can go be a consultant? I can work on X and I can work on Y. And and part of the direction that that Chad gave, and this was even prior to me speaking with them, is absolutely, but no, that work won't be in Red Lodge. And I know that there was some comments that Cody had made in these meetings of you'll see me back and we'll be here and and
Courtney may.
What's going to happen is that'll be secondhand information. Cody or Chad will get that. What happens otherwise when you bring people in that, first off, it doesn't scale well. Hey, everybody come here and then go and come out, so it's not a, it's not a repeatable, scalable thing. But Cody's response is, oh, that happened to me. When she came on from the municipality, she said, I went, I went back for them for the first year and a half and it was the most miserable experience of my entire life, because everybody's reaching out and grabbing you and and it pulls you out of scope. Um, and so I, he he mentioned reaching out to to um, uh, Courtney. And so Cody has that link to do that, but that's the channel we'll go through if we need to get information from Courtney. The plan is that past staff members who go to work with any agencies on the outside won't be coming back and doing work within Red Lodge, so.
And I'm not suggesting that that Courtney do it. I'm suggesting that Courtney may be able to help Cody find where it is within the electronic file. And then if she sends it to me and Jeff, we can make sure it's compares to our notes and then we can forward it on to you.
Okay, right. You just, you just raised that and I thought that was maybe something that was was worth a mention to this group, so. Thank you for the brain reminder there.
Are you, are you okay with what what Al presented?
Absolutely, yeah. And 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 we've already talked about, it it, there's, there's not a walled garden or anything. It's just there's a, there's a a chain of command and a who's grabbing them and utilizing their time and assigning what. And 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 much like stuff coming to you guys without going through the channels, how do we avoid that with 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 all of our different contractors we work with? It just so happens that our engineering is one of the larger ones, so.
And and I will just also say this, just make sure that we do this properly, is that once Jeff and I see it, we'll probably share it with the whole planning board to make sure everybody sees it and remembers it before we forward it on to you.
That's, that's all right. I said, I just, once, once I get that validation, I do that, it's probably it's my job to follow up and make sure that it's adhered to as well as to identify what the systemic problem was that caused it to happen in the first place, so that it doesn't happen again.
Somebody overloaded.
Thank you.
Sarah, anything else for me?
No, I think, uh, I think you'd probably like to, as as Al alluded to, is visit with you a little bit about our list of priorities and also where, what you think are where we should be focusing the next um, three to four months.
Okay, um, what I can share along those lines is that last night, in my mind, there was a very general theme theme all the way across council that had very much to do with doing what we can to accommodate workforce housing within the city. Um, and one of those things is the uh, one of those things is uh, we are going to be revisiting our impact fees. And then as we regulate and adopt those, whether we have the um, options of either waiving or discounting or some other mechanism. And I think that's something that that the council would probably look to this board to for some recommendations on housing appropriately to do that. But again, that council needs to come, or that direction, in my understanding, needs to come from the council, them being the board that's actually ultimately going to approve it. I think I can give you my two cents, but that doesn't mean that's what the council's going to approve. So that's, that's my guidance is let's make sure we get guidance from the council and we can do that in part of that joint meeting.
And Jeff, I have shared our latest priority list and status of of project with Dave. He has that in his file.
Okay.
I'm gonna go sit down so you can put your meeting out.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Dave. And you guys have anything else to add or?
Jeff, were you gonna, were you gonna speak to ex parte?
Oh, thanks, yes, uh, for reminding me. Um, yes, I just, it's probably, this is, since this is our first meeting of the year, it's probably maybe a good time to remind ourselves about ex parte communication um, for anything that comes before the board that's quasi judicial. Um, in other words, we're not supposed to visit amongst ourselves or with the public or any, any action that actionable item that's going to come before the board that we're going to be ruling on, such as an application we saw tonight. Um, and it's, as I, as Forrest always kind of made the distinction that I thought he always made a good distinction was between our role as a legislative branch and our role as a quasi judicial entity. And so for things that fall within our legislation duties, we are free to visit with the community and gain their input and 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 have discussions with with them in terms of what they would like, like to see, whether it's on growth policy or the revitalization plan or those, or if we're in the process of updating our zoning. Those are legislative in nature and we have the are able to and are probably should be encouraged to seek input from from the public along with dealing with those. But if it's, if it's, if it's an applicant coming to us for review, for review of their their uh, their proposal relative to zoning regulations and approval, that's quasi judicial. And so, any questions about that? Al, do you have anything you want to add?
Oh, I think you covered it and 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 what brought this up is, um, I got an email from an applicant that felt that she had been told that. I got an email from an applicant that felt that she had been told that we'd had people that had already made a decision on, 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 on a conditional use and I brought that up to Jeff. Turns out that maybe that was a bad rumor or false information, but it, it reminded me that we need to be careful about ex parte discussions uh, on conditional use applications and such as, such as that.
All right, if there's nothing else, I'll close the meeting.
Thanks, Cody.